Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 13th zoning board hearing. A couple of quick housekeeping articles. Need the approval in the minutes of April 11th. I have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Bob, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Pass that down for me, please. Okay, this is on the, this is a communication from Fairfield Milford on the 40B Performance Bond. They are currently, they're requesting a continuance until the July 18th meeting and also a request at that point in time developing the 260 units up the street for the same project. Need a motion to approve the continuance.
Motion.
Motion by John, is there a second?
No, second.
Second by Mark, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? July 11th is the new date, right? I think the planning board's down to once a month. This is also a request for an extension. This here is, Rob, you here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is our representation of 85 Realty Corp. The applicant in connection with the above referenced property known as 5355 Medway Road. They're requesting a extension of the special permit for one year due to the appeal process and dismissal of the same, along with the challenge to get the construction process in here. We are requesting a one-year extension of the motion. Motion by John, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bobby, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, folks.
Okay, guys. Good luck.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Oh, is that where they're right? Oh, God.
Okay. Yeah, now at 7:15, yeah?
7:10. 7:10.
Yeah, this is, this is the 705 application, so this one here, we got notification from the attorney representing the group. This office, this counsel represents a petitioner in connection with his petition for special permit related to the above referenced property at 50 Congress Street, owing to an error in the description of the release sought by his client in the notices in anticipation of a hearing. This is a request that we re-advertise and continue the hearing of the petition for July 11th. Well, I have a motion.
Motion.
Motion to continue till July 11th, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. It's moving too quickly.
Think. Is that Mark over? Okay.
Well, July 11th is gonna be busy, I may have to take a vacation.
I won't be on vacation.
You're on vacation?
I don't know. I think I'm the next one. You might have to.
You're all on vacation. Okay. So, the next application, now that it is 7:15, just about, is we are, the application of Milford AMPM LLC, 25 Wyman Drive, Sudbury, for a special permit relief in sections 2, 3.2, 5.1, and the other provisions of the zoning bylaw in relation to a parcel of land on Sessach Sheet 48, Lot 385, located on the western side of Main Street, known as number is 221-223 Main Street. Special permit relief is sought in order to permit a portable storage facility to be maintained and used in connection with the, with the facility that's on site. This is a reminder, the application indicates, this is, is this real trail?
It is.
Basically, this is for a storage container concerning the, the questions that were asked on the application. The applicant states that the proposed use continued beyond the front yard setbacks of the existing building and walkway. It's unobstrusive, it's unobstrusive to the neighborhood properties and traffic circulation, will not affect traffic patterns or negatively impact any of the vehicle concerning any of the circulation. As far as the proposed use will not cause harm to the neighborhood or create a nuisance hazard affecting the health, safety, and welfare of the general public, the applicant states that the proposed container is well within the site and unintrusive to the neighborhood properties, will not impact parking or vehicle circulation, and will be secured by a lock at all times when it's not intended for any use. So, this has gone in front of the planning board. Planning board reviewed the petition at their June 4th meeting, made a favorable recommendation submitted to site plan submitted to the planning board subsequent to ZVA actions. And, planning board letter indicates that the applicant requests a special permit approval for the use of the portable storage container on the subject property. The portable storage containers are considered portable warehouses for the purposes of zoning and as such require a special permit approval under the section 3.2.5.1 of the zoning bylaws. Specifically, the proposal is to retain the portable storage container that has been placed adjacent to the outdoor restaurant cavity at the rear of the building. The container is for the storage of firewood use and the operation of the restaurant kitchen. It would be noted that the plan submitted with this application is proposing site alterations that have yet to be approved by the planning board, therefore they recommend a favorable report being sent off to the ZVA, submitted to a site plan being submitted to the planning board subsequent to the ZVA action. So, board members in your packet, real briefly and quickly, you will find the, the site plan and you will also see the area where the store, of the storage container is. So, they would still have to go back to the planning board, submit the plan, the approval, if we grant the variance, it's gonna be subject to.
There's one over here?
That's it, it's the same one, sorry.
Right in the middle.
Ah, you are not.
So, what will happen is if the board chooses, any decision made tonight would be subject to them providing a engineered plan, an updated revised one with the container on the property. Anybody in the audience can be heard on this? You wanna just give us a brief overview?
Sure. Yeah, it is a storage container, and I know there's a lot of rules and laws around that, and that's why we're here today. It was, you know, picked to fit specifically in a way that's tucked, that's the same color as the building, it was, many things were considered aesthetically, you know, just even for our purposes, we wanted to have a nice entrance and to the restaurant from the back. That is the rear entrance of the restaurant, but it is in many ways the main entrance of the restaurant. And, you know, for us, it has a, besides it kinda fitting with the sort of semi-industrial design of the building inside and outside, it does have a functional use where we do store all our firewood in there and then replenish it in the morning from that container.
Okay, so, the size of the container is nine by what?
I think it's like nine by nine by 20 maybe? I'm sorry, it is in there, I don't recall exactly.
Wait a minute. 20, 20 foot by nine feet, okay. All right, so we'll condition it 20 feet by nine feet, and, and my suggestion is, we have a motion, it would be, it would be a 20 foot by nine foot storage container, and the condition of the, of the container would need to be maintained, whether it needs paint or rusting, that type of stuff. So, with that, I'll close the hearing, and we have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by John, that we.
20 by nine.
20 by nine container on site, in its current location.
Keep it maintained.
Container is to be maintained in good condition and free from any peeling, paint, or rust. It will also be subject to.
Planning board.
Planning board approval to provide the updated site plan and reflecting things.
Can I add one thing to that, David? In the event we had graffiti all over this thing?
Yes.
Which could happen?
Sure.
Gets to clean, be cleaned within a 48 hours.
Good one.
Okay, in the event, in the event.
Is it just used for wood storage?
Storage container.
Yes. Yes. How do you get the?
It's vandalized.
Oh, so you leave an entry, you leave a hall in the?
Can I finish this?
Sorry.
It can, submitted to the storage container getting vandalized, it must be, it must be addressed and fixed within 48 hours. Second?
Second.
Second by Bob, all those in favor? Opposed? That is unanimous. So, your next step is planning board, because your decision will not be.
I understand.
Active until the planning board, so whatever idea you add, you decide, stop, get to him, and then you can get, you can get in front of the planning board, okay? All right.
Answer a question.
Quick question.
It's loaded and unloaded from the same front side.
Gotcha. Just on dollars.
Where, you got the truck outside?
Which truck is that?
Where's the food?
Oh, you know what, I use mention it next time, I'm nothing clever with food, so.
Yeah, next time.
Good night. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Bring the pizza.
Okay, move her right along.
I don't have your agenda.
Okay, on the application of Argentina Montero, so, come on up, please, you know, read the notice. This is on the application of Argentina Montero, so, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, 155 Purchase Street, for a special permit relief in the provisions of section 2.3 of the zoning bylaws in relation to a 44,658 square foot more or less parcel of land located on the eastern side of Purchase Street, known and numbered as 155 Purchase Street. Special permit relief is sought in order to permit the keeping of chickens on the Purchase Street premises as residential animals within the Milford zoning bylaw. So, this has gone into the, the planning board has reviewed this. Also, it's got a quick notification from the Board of Health. We received notification for the special permit for 155 Purchase Street. The Board of Health recently passed regulations on keeping of fowl chickens, is there, there would be several conflicts with the special permit, and these regulations, most notably the coops are within 10 feet of the property line, there is no pen to keep the chickens confined, and the presence of two coop signals that they are intending to have more than six chickens, if a special permit is to be issued, they cannot meet the condition of these regulations. They would need to come before the Board of Health to seek a variance for this board, and a combination of both. So, with that, I believe you did get a copy of all the regulations, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so let me move on. Concerning the application, the application indicates, explain the reason you assert that special permit is in harmony with the general purpose of the intent of the bylaw. The applicant states that the lot size is one acre in size, plenty of space for the chickens. Concerning the question of the proposed use of the premises will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. The applicant states the chickens are remained in our yard all the times, we have five-foot fencing all around, a lot which prevents them from roaming into the street or into the neighbors' yards. And then the other last question is proposed use of the premises will not cause harm to the neighborhood or create a nuisance or hazard affecting the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. The applicant states that all the chickens will be kept in a reasonable manner, responsible manner, they are constantly monitored for any infections, and there's always someone keeping an eye on them, all of our next door neighbors are okay with that. So, that came directly from the application. The, the next aspect would be, the planning board did review this on their 6/4 meeting and recommends the following. The planning board has made a favorable recommendation submitted to the structures to be used as chicken coops, being relocated as necessary to meet the applicable zoning requirements. Town plan letter is for reference, and it indicates that the applicant's request for the special permit for keeping of residential animals on the subject property consists of a single family dwelling on the one acre. Specifically, the proposal is to raise chickens within the fenced-in rear yard. Several of the existing sheds are proposed for use as future chicken coops. The applicant has made, has been made aware of the Board of Health, recently adopted regulations on keeping fowl, so that they can properly gauge how those will affect the proposal, and the attached regulations are here. So, with that, there is a site plan, I'd like you to take a look at the site plan, board members. So, under the regulations, I mean, I wanna be clear, so there's no questions of what needs to happen. There are 10, actually 13 general regulations, and if you go to the bylaws under section 5, general requirements on page 2, the maximum number of chickens are only six. Anything beyond that, you'll be in a violation. All coops must be located 10 feet from the property line, so if the coops are too close to the back property line, they would need to have to be moved. Moved in, so you'll have to be 10 feet from the rear property line. All coops must be located 50 feet from a dwelling on a budding property, 25 feet from the dwelling on the parcel itself, and the coop may not be visible from the public way unless otherwise blocked by a site obscuring fence or other means, which you have a fence. All coops for chickens must be provided a minimum of three square feet of interior floor space. All coops must be durable construction and raised no less than six inches from the ground to allow adequate cleaning and to prevent hovering any vermin. All coops must be well-vented to prevent the building up of odor and moisture, and all fowl must be confined to the owner's locks. The pen must also be closed on all sides, and the top for security of the fowl and to prevent the escape into the neighborhood, not to exceed eight feet in height. It must contain a minimum of five square feet per hen. So, you have the structure, you also need a pen outside that structure. What you have is a fence, that's not gonna cut it, you have to actually have a fence around the coop itself.
All right.
Okay, that's part of the bylaw.
All right.
And it's, and it has to be five square feet per chicken area.
Thirty.
Yard area per chicken, so they have enough room.
All right.
Both the coop and pen must be kept in a clean and sanitary manner, free from decaying food, filth, vermin infestation, and stagnant water. Plottable water must be available to the fowl in the coop and pen. Food shall be stored in a sealed, moisture-proof, and venom-proof containers. All persons maintaining a special permit must be, must, must upon reasonable notice make the coop and pen available for inspection by the Board of Health, and there'll be a timeframe of response to that in the special decision. And an emergency section concerning the bylaw. If the Board of Health determines an emergency exists, the board may petition the zoning board of appeals to immediately revoke or suspend the special permit. So, as long as, I wanted to make sure we got through those general bylaws. So, now saying that, we have shed three, proposed chicken coop on the plan, shed two existing, is that an existing shed in the back left-hand corner of the house?
Yes.
Is that what it is, a shed?
Yeah.
Is that a tool shed or something like that?
It's, it's.
Or coop.
I mean, I think they used to have chickens in there before I bought the house, because when, when we bought the house, it was the coop already in there. Yeah.
And then we have another shed four, which is existing in the rear property, proposed chicken coop. And then shed number one out front.
That's a storage.
That's storage?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we need to make the permits for that shed as well.
That's the big shed?
Yeah, the big one, yeah.
Okay, all right.
So, none of these.
So, are you, are you trying to use shed, shed two used to be the chicken coop, and you're trying?
The one on the back?
Back left?
Yes, no, back right.
Oh, back.
Why don't you come up here and show me which one you're trying to use the coops for, that'll make it easy for us.
Yeah, because.
So, there's your house.
This is, this is our house, this is the big shed for storage.
Right.
This is another shed for storage.
Yeah.
So, we don't use this, and our plan is use this one and this two, I mean, this one.
Well, you won't, how big, how big are these sheds?
Big.
There's no size on it.
There's no size on it?
No size on the shed.
How big is it?
Big.
Is this a shed?
That's probably 20.
10 by 10.
10?
Yes.
Shed number three's 10 by 10?
I don't know if this is.
This one here is 10 by 10?
No.
Is it?
That ain't 10 by 10, that's longer.
That's, that's longer than 10 by 10. He doesn't have a measure.
Okay.
I know it's pretty big.
It's about 22, 20, 20 to 24.
This is, this is smaller than that one.
Okay.
It's about 20 by 10.
So, you want to, just so you know, so you understand that if you have six chickens in here, you need to have a fence?
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
Okay.
Because this is, this is a mobile fence, so he can, he can build a permanent fence for the.
It has to be connected, okay?
All right, yeah.
And then these are gonna have to get moved in, I'm just saying.
Our plan, if we would get the permit, our plan is make a fence connected with both, so they can have enough space, you know, the ones standing here and couple of them standing there.
Right, but what I'm saying is, this is too close, too close to the back property.
So, you want us to move that?
You have to be 10 feet.
10 feet.
From the back property line, okay? Because you got it all staked now, right?
Yeah.
That's a distance from there to there.
Because this is, this is bigger, so we can, we can just make it, make it smaller.
We can do whatever.
We can just make it smaller and move it through here and build a fence.
That's right.
So, it will be far from the.
Right, I just wanna make sure that where you're gonna have.
Yeah, that's our block.
The chickens, I'm gonna put it on the plan, that you're gonna have the chickens in these two.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
You're gonna connect those still?
Yes, that's our block.
Okay.
Plenty of room.
Anybody wanna be heard on this hearing? If you are, please speak up. Any questions? Okay. All right.
I kinda, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Why do we, if there's a maximum of six chickens, why do you need a two chicken sheds?
I don't think you do.
She's just gonna utilize them. They're, they exist, so she's gonna utilize the space.
The Board of Health is gonna, the permit she's getting tonight, if, if the board agrees, it's gonna be predicated on a maximum of six chickens, you can't have any more than that. Period understood.
Too much.
So, if they wanna choose one shed.
We can do that as well, right?
For number three, which is the bigger one, right? This is, this is the bigger one.
Yeah, the bigger, the long one, yeah.
Then, then we will, we will, we will identify shed number three for the chickens.
Right.
Now we're there, she can focus there. If, if you've got more than chicken, more than six chickens, you'll be in violation and you can be immediately shut down. So, my suggestion would be, if you've got more than six, you need to get, you need to get, you're gonna have to.
And no roosting.
That's the bylaw. Otherwise, you'll be totally shut down, they won't have any.
Okay.
Just the, just the bylaw. All right, so, the motion I am suggesting would be to, to move shed number three.
Oh, does anybody on the board have any more questions?
Well, that's why I'm gonna.
I commend her for coming in.
Yeah.
Be honest with you.
Doing it the right way, that's the way we want it. Bobby, questions?
I'm listening, go ahead.
Mark?
I'm good with the whole thing.
Dave?
I haven't, no. That was it, just.
Done, okay. All right, so, so two things need to occur, the motion's gonna be that both sheds in the rear property need to be moved in 10 feet from the back property line. So, we're moving shed four and three.
Yep. Can they easily move them?
To conform.
Did you easily move them?
Yeah, my husband is a carpenter, so.
Rear property setbacks.
Not gonna be moved forward.
Yeah.
And shed number.
Three.
Three on the plan will be utilized to host the six chickens, and of course.
And move 10 feet from the property line?
Six chickens, that's on that, max six chickens on site. And then needs to conform, and I'm gonna put this, I'm gonna put this right into decision. Needs to conform to Board of Health, general requirements, 1 through 13. Now, concerning notice, if the Board of Health, the building inspector, or the zoning board, we need to provide notice to come into your site if we feel there's a violation. That can be anywhere from six hours to 24 hours, what would you prefer?
Six hours to 24 hours?
Yeah.
24 hours.
24 hours? 24-hour notice, let's see if you can get rid of them, right? 24-hour notice to enter for inspections. Regretfully, these bylaws are in place for a reason, and you know the reason why? Because a lot of these general issues with sanitary issues have been violated so much in the past that it became out of control. So, now they're gonna, that's why these regulations were adopted. You follow the regulations, you'll never have any issues, okay?
All right.
So, with that, is there a motion under those conditions?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mark, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. So, now, it's a 20-day appeal period.
All right.
So, in 20 days, the zoning board is gonna be issuing you the full authorization that you legally can have chickens, you need to now put in place, move in the sheds 10 feet off the property line.
That's all I'm gonna do.
And preparing, preparing the coop, and the fencing that goes with the coop.
Yes, sir.
Because they can't run free in the yard, okay?
All right.
Good.
All right.
And thank you both for coming in and doing it the right way.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Okay, thank you. Good night.
The maximum is.
Right.
Before you have to actually call it a zoning.
Mm-hmm.
But if you call it a chicken coop, there's no maximum sign.
You don't think so?
Mm-hmm. Good, good question.
I think any dwelling over 120 square feet, it doesn't matter what it's called.
Are you, are you subject to actual zoning?
Right.
If you go above.
Above the 120.
Correct.
Otherwise, it's half the distance.
Mm-hmm, that's true.
That's more than 120.
So, like, decide to put some 10 feet.
I put highlights in the file so that it's easier to read, because I know Jerry can't read my chickens, scratch.
About chickens, no difference.
How'd you like that, huh?
The rest one, yeah.
Showing, showing your age.
Whoa.
All right, here we go. There's my agenda, there we go.
Oh, boy.
There we go, I got it. I'm gonna call Joe.
Yes. This is Alicia De Angelis, by the way, who was deputy general counsel to the company.
Oh, great, okay.
And a former compliance manager, so that's how we stay out of trouble. So, there's gonna be a good night, John.
Attorney Antonellis, you are now on speakerphone.
Oh, that's not Joe.
And the room has got 80 people in here, so, um, what's the language?
I certainly will, and, and just let me know, is my voice projecting enough?
Yes, your voice always, always projects.
Coming off the golf cart, Joe, yeah.
Are we doing both of these at the same time?
Well, I think you have to open one
Yeah.
And open the second.
You're gonna have to do them both.
Yeah.
Open them both. All right, so this is on the application, this is on the application of Sure Naturals, 300 Trade Center Suite 7750, Woburn, Mass. for a variance relief from sections 2.3 and or 2.5 of the zoning bylaws in relation to a possible land located on the northerly side of Industrial Road, known and numbered as One Industrial Road, and the variance relief is sought in order to permit the continuing usage of the property. The premises is currently utilized for the cultivation of cannabis products, and there has been recently been established a residential use on the abutting property, which, if the variance were not granted, would impact the changes in the use anticipated on the proposed subject site. With that, I'm also gonna read the, because it is past the 7:20 hour, on the application of Sure Naturals of the same address for the special permit relief pursuant to sections 2.3 of the zoning bylaws in relation to a possible land located on the northerly side of Industrial Road, known and numbered as One Industrial Road. The special permit relief is sought in order to permit the applicant, applicant to add medical marijuana production to the existing marijuana establishment located on the subject property. So with that, Joe, I believe you've gone through the planning board process?
Yes. Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, we've been through the planning board process. We were there last week, it's there, ready to be scheduled.
Okay, so on the, on the variance for, on the planning board made a favorable recommendation, and this is, this is a very lengthy letter from the, from the planning board, I'll try and paraphrase the best I can. The applicant requests a variance for 200-foot separation requirements to convert the existing marijuana establishment to medical marijuana treatment center on the subject property. The applicant intends to decommission the existing medical marijuana treatment center at 13 Commercial Way and relocate it to this property at One Industrial, as evidenced by the special permit application filed concurrently in the case. The medical marijuana treatment centers are provided for the zoning bylaw by ZBA special permit with the IB and IC districts and further subject to the requirements of the footnote number 23, Use Regulation Schedule of a residential zone, dwelling unit, school, place, worship, church, park, playground, and youth center measurements to determine that 200-foot separation shall be taken from the property lines. Where any portion of the lot is within a required separation, the entire lot shall be considered to be within the required separation as noted above. The applicant has concurrently applied for the requisite special permit, however, the variance will be necessary from the 200-foot separation requirement prior to the proper reconsideration of the special permit application. The existing marijuana establishment on the subject property is used for cultivation of non-medical marijuana only. It was allowed due to Sure Naturals predecessor by Bay State Relief, having been licensed and registered by the state and approved to operate in Milford prior to July 1, 2017 as a medical marijuana treatment center at their 13 Commercial Way site. As per footnote number 29, section 2.3 of the Use Schedule, is, is that operation of 13 Commercial Way that they now seek to decommission and relocate to the subject property. In the intervening years, an affordable housing development under Mass. General Chapters 40B, the state zoning override law, has been developed on the abutting 27-acre parcel to the property to the north of 15 Birch Street. That by default has triggered the application of the 200-foot separation requirement, and due to the lot configurations, has reduced any separation to zero, even though both properties are still entirely within the IB industrial zone. While some 560 foot separates the existing structure and the closest residential building in the 40B resident development, measurements are determined based on the 200-foot separation must be taken from property line as per footnote 23. No other changes are being proposed on the site, and therefore, they recommend a favorable report be sent off to the zoning board. With that and your package, of course, there is a site plan, and therefore, at that point, I will turn it over to the attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and for the record, Joseph Antonellis, on behalf of the applicant, Sure Naturals, with you tonight in the audience is John Fernandez, attorney, my brother, attorney who you know very well, who is corporate counsel for Sure Naturals, and was kind enough to ask me to get involved in this particular petition. And for the board's history, Sure Naturals Incorporated is actually a Bay State Relief entity. There was no change of ownership in, in the structure of, of the company. There wasn't name change that was required because there was a conflicting name of a company on the South Shore, and so Sure chose a new name. So the applicant before you is the app, the same applicant in essence that was before you when you, your board granted a variance for the same purposes for the 13 Commercial Way site, because there was a residence across the street from that particular parcel, even though it's within the same zone. And so when we did the first, the first medical marijuana facility on 13 Commercial Way, a variance was granted by your board. So what we're doing here tonight is seeking to have that variance, in essence, moved to the new spot of One Commercial Way, excuse me, One Industrial Road, which is an existing cultivation and processing facility for Sure Naturals, however, presently being used solely for what is called recreational or adult-use marijuana. The distinction in the statute, if you will recall, and we started with your board with medical marijuana, is there are two categories of marijuana sales in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, one being medical, for which a person must receive a prescription and fill out certain forms, and the other is adult cannabis, which is available to any resident over the age of 21 years old in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Notwithstanding that the fact, the fact that the plants are identical, that the treat, the product, growing, processing, cultivation, extraction of THC, everything of both the two operations is the same, with one significant difference for the purpose of monitoring in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Every seed, and it's called seed to sale, every seed is designated either as medical or as recreational. And what we'd like to do is to combine operations in the One Industrial Road site, so that simply to improve production and obviously what, what Sure wants to do, and through the guidance of Attorney Fernandez, is to make certain that when we go to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, because we're required to notify there were many and all changes, that we have the proper designation and we have complied with each and every one of your zoning bylaws. I believe that the letter that was sent to you from the planning board adequately sets for the criteria of what's happened over here. Your board is well aware of the fact that a 40B development was proposed on Industrial End, and your board, now they have great experience with 40Bs, understands that there's basically no ability for your board to continue the master plan of the town of Milford, which was to designate specific areas within the town for specific uses, albeit industrial, commercial, residential. So what happens with 40Bs, it allows the development to override local zoning, and in the first, in essence, it, what it's done, it's negatively affected the other industrial parcels in, in the area, because it's requiring us to get a variance. So we believe that, under the strict definition of hardship in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, that we do fit within the criteria, because this parcel is unique, because it has a present use. The use that we're seeking to add to it is fundamentally the same use that's already there, and but for the development of the 40B project on the abutting parcel, we wouldn't be needing a variance at all, we'd simply be coming to you with a special permit, which is also a requirement for medical marijuana. Just again, for, for purposes of, of history, when Milford adopted the zoning bylaw to allow for recreational marijuana, we, it was adopted without the requirement for a special permit. So the existing facility on Industrial Road is there simply by way of site plan approval. The, I think that, you know, but for the development of the 40B parcel, I, I don't think there's any impact at all in the neighborhood. We have provided you with a agenda plan to demonstrate that the building that is being the closest building that will be erected under the 40B project is 560 feet from the existing building where we would like to move some medical marijuana facilities. Again, I think this is a de minimis situation in the area. I don't believe that there is anything that will affect the neighborhood at all, and I submit, I submitted answers to the questions, and I'm here to respond to any questions that the board may have or anybody in the audience. And to the extent that you need any demonstration on the plan, Attorney Fernandez is very familiar with it and can assist in that, in that regard. So, Mr. Chairman, with that brief presentation solely on the variance, I will stop talking for a minute and allow you, you or the board members to ask any questions about the variance, and then perhaps we could move on to the special permit.
Okay, so from, from, just as a recap real quick, and John will verify it, this is basically on One Industrial, and we're looking at the variance because of the 200-foot property line, correct?
That is correct. If you look at that...
It's because the, the measurements must take place from the property line of our property, and obviously, because we have bought a parcel of property that is now, that now has a residential structure, we don't have the 200 feet separation.
Correct.
And again, our argument is, is that while the, while the bylaw requires a 200-foot separation, we in essence have a 560-foot separation if we measure from building to building.
Right, but not property on a property line?
Right, and you never, and you never saw my lips move, right?
Because we actually have a plan, we have a shared common line.
But Attorney Fernandez wants the floor. Can you sit for a minute, Joe?
Uh, Joe, I just...
Certainly can.
Joe, I gave them a copy... I was on a brief description, by the way, Joe, it was lengthy.
Joe, I gave them a, a copy of a, an aerial view of the lot, and if you look at the designation of the building one on that
Yeah.
You can see it. And you look to the upper right, upper left, you see the bigger
It's the 40B.
Of the land, that's where the 40B is, as you would know.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that separation to the nearest building is over 500.
Bottom line here is, the state forced us into a 40B.
Correct.
They put it there, and now somebody else is gonna be penalized because...
That's why this is gonna be an easy vote.
It's very easy vote.
Right, exactly.
Yeah. Anybody, Dave?
Honestly, I think this is a net positive, right? They're really just moving from one place to another place that's further away, it's less noticeable, it's...
But the only difference is, Dave, the requirement is, the 40B in back needs to be 200.
Oh, correct, yeah.
All of a sudden, that takes up...
That's the variance request. Bobby?
I'm good with it.
Mark? Anybody else here to be heard? If not, we'll close this hearing, and you ready to go?
Sure.
The motion?
I got a motion to approve.
Motion as submitted for the variance.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mark, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Okay, this is on the application of Sure Naturals. Again, this is on the variance release from the provision to section, I'm sorry, this is on the special permit relief pursuant to sections 2.3 of the zoning bylaw in relation to a possible land located on the northerly side of Industrial Road, known and numbered as One Industrial. And the special permit relief is sought to order the, permit the applicant to add medical production to the existing marijuana establishment located on the subject property.
And cultivation.
Maybe?
It's, it's cultivation.
Medical cultivation, yes.
And a small, a small production, which will be excellent.
I'm gonna suspend for the reading. You wanna make a motion espens to the reading?
Yeah.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. I'll drive right into the town plan a letter. The planning board has made a favorable recommendation. The town planner indicates the applicant requests a special permit approval to convert the existing medical marijuana establishment to a medical marijuana treatment center on the subject property. The applicant intends to decommission the existing medical marijuana treatment center at 13 Commercial Way and relocate it to the existing profit, to the subject property. Medical marijuana treatment centers are provided for the zoning bylaw by ZBA special permit in the IB and IC's districts, further subject to the 200-foot separation requirements, as we did previously just discuss in the prior one. The applicant, the applicant has concurrently applied for variance from the 200-foot separation agreement. The existing marijuana establishment on the subject property was built due to Sure Naturals predecessor Bay State Relief, having been licensed, registered by the state and approved to operate prior to July 1, 2017, as a medical marijuana treatment center at 13 Commercial Way. Specifically by footnote 29, Use Regulations 2.3, it is that operation at 13 Commercial Way that they now seek to decommission and relocate to this property. However, the recently constructed 40B development at 15 Birch Street has necessitated the need for the variance for the 200-foot separation requirement. It does not appear that there will be any externally discernible differences between the existing marijuana establishment operations and the proposed medical marijuana facility. There's no other changes are being proposed to the site. All other zoning requirements appear to be met, therefore, they recommended a favorable report be sent off to this board. With that...
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
The motion by John, seconded by Bobby, to prove that submitted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Attorney Antonellis?
Oh, well, I, 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 thank you, Mr. Chairman. I assume I will assume for the record that...
John did a wonderful job, Joe.
Yeah, it was all John.
All John.
Nothing to do with you, Joe.
It's probably still raining where you are right now in Florida, anyway.
It's about to start again. Nine inches in the last two minutes.
Joe, you remember what they said in law school?
Aye.
If you, if you've won your case, sit down and shut up. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Joe, see you later.
See you, John.
Some thanks to the board for allowing me to do this remotely. I appreciate the extra work and effort on your part. Nice to hear your voices again, and I'll stop talking, because I know you have a busy agenda.
Joe, take care.
Thank you, Joe. See you later.
Thank you, Joseph.
Good evening.
Thank you. John, thanks, see you later.
Bye.
What do they call that, caccinò?
Yeah, that was that?
Caccinò is.
Yep.
Okay, we have the last hearing, and wow, it's before 8 o'clock.
Good, you can go have your dinner.
Okay. Just in time to get to the leaving.
What is Keith up to now?
I know, huh? This one's way easier. Not as entertaining as Joe, but we should be quick and unanimous, I'm hoping.
Take longer to read the application, right?
Yes, exactly.
On the application of Vineyard Point Ventures' Menden Mass for various, for variance relief from the provisions of section 2.5 of the zoning bylaws in relation to a 12,700 square foot more or less possible land located on the northerly, southerly side of Ravenna Street, known as numbered as Three Ravenna. The variance relief is sought in order to put the construction of an addition to the existing building, which addition would be within the required front yard setbacks. So on the application... So the, the, what circumstances related to the soil condition shape and toboggan of the property that do not generally affect other land on the zoning district, the applicant states, the shape of the lot and the location of the existing building creates the existing nonconformity. The applicant states, "The shape of the lot and the location of the existing building creates the existing non-conformity. The proposal does not increase the non-conformity. There'll be no accessibility for the handicap." And then the addition would not be increased to add to, to non-conforming anyways. So from that perspective, there are plans in here of the addition, that's what's gonna happen. There's also a bigger plan. You want that real quickly? I think it's just something... Yeah.
Is there a bathroom there now?
There is, but I don't know, I'm a little old. Yeah.
Yeah. Little south of Italy, right?
Yeah, the Owl Club, yeah, it was a south of Italy.
All right, I'll read this from the planning board. The planning board reviewed this on 6-4.
That's what used to vote.
You're always, I'm in the middle of doing this.
I was gonna question you, we're talking to the applicant.
You wait till I get done.
You weren't even talking.
I'm trying to get through the hearing, really. The planning board has made a favorable recommendation. Town planner indicates that the applicant requests a variance from the front yard setback requirements to allow for the construction of a small addition to the front north side of the church located on the subject property. The proposal will enlarge the existing covered Ravenna Street entryway to accommodate the addition of an 8.5 by 9-foot restaurant to the existing church building.
Restaurant.
What did I say, restaurant? All right, it's late. The building, the building was originally constructed in 1940 with only an 11-foot setback from Ravenna Street, and with the existing covered entry, entryway further approaches on the front yard with only a 2-foot setback remaining along Ravenna Street. The proposed addition will extend the north building line to the entryway 8.5 further to the east and maintain the 2-foot setback. No other changes are being proposed to the site, therefore, they recommend a favorable report be sent off to the zoning board. Questions?
Now can I talk?
Yes.
This is the old church, this, it used to be a...
It used to be a club, private club.
Yeah, a tiny club.
And it was a voting station.
Voting station, correct. And there's a downstairs in that building?
There is, it hasn't been prolonged, yeah, forever.
Who was this before? What was the name of it?
It was south of Italy, the Owl Club.
Sons of Italy, that's right.
I didn't know it had a baseball.
No, okay. Haven't even been voting down there. This is pretty years and years ago.
Any other questions, board members? Anybody from the audience care to be heard on this application? Only two here. Speak now or for never to speak. All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
We make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve as submitted?
Submitted.
Second?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Congratulations.
Push a meeting, you guys did a great job.
Still make the last inning of the league.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much, guys.
Hey, Keith.
Motion to adjourn?
Good stage presence.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
A little short of focus.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone, for joining, and have a good night.